I wish we had a little table, that's how we used to do it. Put it back there for them. I know there's not a little table anymore.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought she wore his saber. I know that's a saber, I mean, I thought she wore it down the town. Oh, that's my fault. What is she doing?
She's got something to do.
I don't know if that's a problem.
I thought she wore his saber.
I know that's a saber, I mean, I thought she wore it down the town. Oh, that's my fault. So, what is she doing?
She's got something to do.
I don't know if that's a problem.
That's rock and roll.
Good afternoon. We will call to order the December 2017 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would like to ask that everyone turn their cellphones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper. Ms. Hartz. Mr. Stiglmeyer. Mr. Taylor. Mr. Cohn. Ms. James. Mr. Waits. And Mr. Frost.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly review the meeting format, and I'd like everyone to please listen closely, since we have a good-sized crowd tonight. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding this request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. Does not include any questions asked by Planning Commission or staff regarding these requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. Now, the administrator has a timer, and we will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the November 6, 2017 minutes, and the following annexation and comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning map amendments, which are items number two, the annexation of 405 Green Lawn Drive, and item number three, annexation of NX 1080 Shop Road, as well as a site plan for 16 acres on the west side of Performance Parkway.
Thank you. Are there any Commission members or guests today who wish to have any of the items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? I'd like to ask for a motion then to approve the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda, and I would like to ask everyone, when they come forward, to please state your name clearly before speaking. Thank you.
Your regular agenda, the first item this evening, is an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for 1215 Mason Road, 1307 Mason Road, 4.73 acres Denton Drive, 3.88 acres Denton Drive, as well as plus or minus 17.7 acres of the north-south Mason Road and NX 1028 Wooddale Circle.
Any questions for staff from the Commissioner? Is the applicant here?
Good evening again. I'm Anthony Lawrence with Brownstone. I'm representing Watt Properties on this development called Azerist on Heritage Creek. I come before you tonight after you gave us a 30-day extension last month. Since then, we've met with the community twice to provide additional information. Each time we've had a meeting, more individuals have come to our public input sessions. As soon as or as late as last Thursday, we had a meeting whereby the mayor attended to address questions associated with annexation, and the design team would like to ask for another 30-day extension so that we can go back to the community and talk to them some more about the project, because we believe the more we have some additional meetings, the more we'll have more individuals out, and it's important for us to get their input as we move forward in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So, can we defer this, or does he have... We can defer it.
If they had asked us last week, we would have automatically have deferred it, but they can ask at the meeting, so we would just need a motion from you all to defer it. I suppose you could take action if you wanted.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor to defer this, the motion, annex 217-0021? Signify by saying aye. Any one oppose? Motion is deferred.
Mr. Chairman? For those who attended on that item, do you want them to come back next month to...
Yes. Okay. And number six is deferred, I believe.
Item number six is deferred. So, our next item is number seven. It is a zoning map amendment for 2717 Canterbury Road. It's to rezone this parcel from single-family residential RS1 to single-family residential RS2. And you do have some letters from the neighborhood, I believe, regarding this particular one. And the applicant is here, I believe.
Any questions for staff? I don't see what did staff recommend.
Staff is recommending denial on this particular one. As you can see on this zoning map that's on the screen, RS2 is to the south, so their request to rezone to RS2 is adjacent to a current RS2 area. But you'll also notice there's a very strong line between the RS2 and RS1, and that RS2 really just hugs that part of Gervais Street. And then the lots on Canterbury going on to Devonshire and Wellington are RS1 currently.
So, I just got these letters. I'm trying to... I guess we'll call the applicant.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Goff, and originally it was zoned as RS2, and we just wanted to rezone it back to an RS2. It looks like most of the properties around that area are zoned as that or have been grandfathered in. And I have the original plat here that shows the original zoning here. This is when it was zoned as R2, and it was divided up into two lots.
Why do you want to change it from RS... One back to RS2?
Well, just from a value standpoint, I think it devalues the property to have it as RS1.
Are there more uses in RS2 than one?
Not necessarily. It's more that the lot sizes and the distances the buildings can be from the lot lines change. That's the major difference.
So, for example, in RS1, minimum lot area, lot area is 15,000 square feet. RS2, 8,500 square feet. Minimum lot width is different, too. RS1, 90 feet is the minimum lot width. Create a new lot, RS2 is 60 feet. And your setbacks are a little bit different as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you know when it was rezoned from RS1 to... Or RS2 to RS1?
Um, Jessica.
Maybe a question for staff, and why?
Originally, it's been in the family since 1950, and it's probably been about eight or nine years ago since it's been rezoned.
Any other questions for the applicant?
That's rock and roll.
Good afternoon. We will call to order the December 2017 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would like to ask that everyone turn their cellphones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The Administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper? Ms. Hartz? Mr. Stegelmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
And Mr. Frost. We have quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly review the meeting format, and I'd like everyone to please listen closely since we have a good-sized crowd tonight. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding this request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. Does not include any questions asked by Planning Commission or staff regarding these requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. Now, the Administrator has a timer, and we will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The Administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the November 6, 2017 minutes, and the following annexation and comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning map amendments, which are items number two, the annexation of 405 Green Lawn Drive, and item number three, annexation of NX 1080 Shop Road, as well as a site plan for 16 acres on the west side of Performance Parkway.
Thank you. Are there any Commission members or guests today who wish to have any of the items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? I'd like to ask for a motion then to approve the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda, and I would like to ask everyone, when they come forward, to please state your name clearly before speaking. Thank you.
Your regular agenda, the first item this evening, is an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for 1215 Mason Road, 1307 Mason Road, 4.73 acres Denton Drive, 3.88 acres Denton Drive, as well as plus or minus 17.7 acres of the north-south Mason Road and NX 1028 Wooddale Circle.
Any questions for staff from the Commissioner? Is the applicant here?
Good evening again. I'm Anthony Lawrence with Brownstone. I'm representing Watt Properties on this development called Azerist on Heritage Creek. I come before you tonight after you gave us a 30-day extension last month. Since then, we've met with the community twice to provide additional information. Each time we've had a meeting, more individuals have come to our public input sessions. As soon as or as late as last Thursday, we had a meeting whereby the mayor attended to address questions associated with annexation, and the design team would like to ask for another 30-day extension so that we can go back to the community and talk to them some more about the project, because we believe the more we have some additional meetings, the more we'll have more individuals out, and it's important for us to get their input as we move forward in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So can we defer this, or is the applicant? We can defer it.
If they had asked us last week, we would have automatically have deferred it, but they can ask at the meeting, so we would just need a motion from you all to defer it.
Okay.
I suppose you could take action if you wanted.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor to defer this, the motion, NX-217-0021? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion is deferred.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For those who attended on that item, do you want them to come back next month to
Yes.
Okay.
And number six is deferred, I believe.
Item number six is deferred. So our next item is number seven. It is a zoning map amendment for 2717 Canterbury Road. It's to rezone this parcel from single-family residential RS1 to single-family residential RS2, and you do have some letters from the neighborhood, I believe, regarding this particular one, and the applicant is here, I believe.
Any questions for staff? I don't see what did staff recommend?
Staff is recommending denial on this particular one. As you can see on this zoning map that's on the screen, RS2 is to the south, so their request to rezone to RS2 is adjacent to a current RS2 area, but you'll also notice there's a very strong line between the RS2 and RS1, and that RS2 really just hugs that part of Gervais Street, and then the lots on Canterbury going on to Devonshire and Wellington are RS1 currently.
So I just got these letters. I'm trying to, I guess we'll call the applicant.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Paul Goff, and originally it was zoned as RS2, and we just wanted to rezone it back to an RS2. It looks like most of the properties around that area are zoned as that or have been grandfathered in. And I have the original flat here that shows the original zoning here. This is when it was zoned as R2, and it was divided up into two lots.
Why do you want to change it from RS1 back to RS2?
Well, just from a value standpoint, I think it devalues the property to have it as RS1.
Are there more uses in RS2 than 1?
Not necessarily. It's more that the lot sizes and the distances the buildings can be from the lot lines change. That's the major difference. So, for example, in RS1, minimum land area, lot area is 15,000 square feet, RS2 8,500 square feet. Minimum lot width is different, too. RS1, 90 feet is the minimum lot width. Create a new lot, RS2 is 60 feet. And your setbacks are a little bit different as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you know when it was rezoned from RS1 to RS2 to RS1?
Um, Jessica.
Maybe a question for staff and why?
Originally, it's been in the family since 1950, and it's probably been about eight or nine years ago since it's been rezoned.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other guests that would like to come up and speak on this?
Yes. My name is Charles Brooks, and I'm the president of the Forest Hills Neighborhood Association, and we oppose this rezoning because we feel like it would set a precedent for chopping up other pieces of property and for the purpose of development. And there's an existing residence on that RS1 lot, which is not indicated on the map, but it's sitting somewhat towards the center of the lot, and I really don't see what they would do with this except put a very small house or a very deep house on a very narrow lot, and we just think it'd be a bad precedent for the whole neighborhood to start chopping up lots to build houses. I understand that infill is an important thing and that the city wants, you know, residents want to live in town, but this is not what the neighborhood needs or wants.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. You may come up to the podium.
I'm Barbara Rax, and I also live in Forest Hills. I love living in Forest Hills. We asked zoning to, the zoning staff, to research when the RS2, when it had been that, and they went back to 1990, and it was RS1 still at 1990. So it's been many years as an RS1 property in the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1309 Wellington Drive, which is the lot to the right of the number one, not the pie-shaped lot, but the lot beside it. While this rezoning may increase the value of the president-owner's property, I believe it will decrease the value for everyone else in the neighborhood. First of all, it's a rental house now. The yard is not kept up well as it stands. I don't think that the aesthetics of it will increase anybody's property value, because the house right now, it looks to me as though it's squarely in the middle of the lot, and then you add the uncertainty that the pie-shaped lot to the left of the lot is vacant now, but has been rezoned to allow somebody to build there, so that house is not in place. So it seems to me that it's going to be nothing but an asymmetrical placement of houses, if that's even possible, but it will definitely devalue everybody's lot around there, first of all, because it's an absentee landlord that has not kept up the yard well at present. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Any other questions for staff? You can come up.
So I know they had mentioned that it was in the, the house that's currently there is in the middle of the lot, and I have the set of plans here showing that it is actually clearly.
Mr. Chairman? He's not going to be, no one can.
I don't think you can come up.
He can pass it around, but he needs to come back.
You can pass it around, but. Thank you.
The width on the single or the full length?
Full width along Canterbury. Well, here it is, 160 feet.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I got, I got a question. This lot now shows as 1. Was it originally two lots?
Yes, sir, it was.
When did it get combined to one lot?
It's been about eight, eight or nine years ago. Yeah. Yeah. Jessica.
She should probably come up to the speaker.
You can come forward.
It's been a combined tax bill for a long time.
You state your name, please.
Jessica Goff.
Okay.
It's been a combined tax bill for a long time. It was originally two lots, and I don't know the full history on that.
Any further, thank you. Any further questions? All right, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request for rezoning of item number seven, ZMA 2017-0025.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion's denied.
Item number eight this evening is also a zoning map amendment. It is for 355 South Waukama Avenue. This is to request to rezone from, sorry, C2 to C3, and staff is also recommending denial, Planning Commission recommended denial to City Council for this rezoning as it doesn't align with the neighborhood activity corridor or the recommendations of the plan for that particular corridor.
Any questions for staff?
And you do have some information from the applicant in front of you, as well as some letters that have been received over the last late Friday as well as today.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Daniels is the applicant, and he's right at the podium.
Sorry?
It's Mr. Daniels.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen, members of the Commission, I'm Jim Daniel. I'm a real estate broker with Catawba Properties. I represent Susie Lee Lamb. Ms. Lamb is sitting on the front row. To give you a brief history of this property, Ms. Lamb inherited this property from her grandmother's estate in 1961. The lot at that time was roughly 63 feet wide by 160 feet deep. In the mid-'70s, the South Carolina DOT acquired a strip when they made Rosewood Drive four lanes instead of two, and she lost roughly 10 to 12, 13 feet to the highway. The frontage on South Waukama is actually less than that because the lot is at an angle at that particular point. In the 1980s, the Rosewood Corridor Study changed, and at that time, the zoning was C3. In the 1980s, the Rosewood Corridor Study changed the zoning from C3 to C2. In October of 1980, Ms. Lamb objected to this rezoning, but to no avail. I'm a real estate broker. I've had this listing for two-plus years. I've only received one contract, and that's from the individual who wants to put the ice machine on the property. I've had a lot of inquiry from people who wanted it for an office location, and then when they realized the size of the lot was 40 to 42 feet wide, we've never generated any interest beyond a call. So that's where we are. We need a C3 for the ice machine. The neighborhood has raised issues about this particular location. It's a zone right now, C2. The adjoining property at 351 South Waukama is C2. If you, the neighborhood, the Hollywood Rosehill neighborhood starts at South Marion, South Marion Street, which is where the USC has their facilities. If you look at each of the corners from South Marion Street to Harden, let me go through those. At the Marion-Rosewood corner, you have a church and the USC athletic department. At the Bull-Rosewood corner, you have a car wash and a car repair stock shop. At the Pickens-Rosewood corner, you have a convenience store and a house/store. At the Fulton-Rosewood corner, you have an empty lot with a tremendous slope that's very difficult to develop in the rear of the Family Dollar Store. If you look at the Greg-Rosewood corner, there's a Family Dollar and a vacant commercial building. If you look at the Saluda-Rosewood corner, there's a vacant commercial lot that used to be the Family Dollar, is now Feliz, and a vacant commercial lot next door, which is paved. If you look at the Edisto-Rosewood corner, there's a Dollar Store and the Cock and Bull Restaurant. If you look at the Waukama-Rosewood corner where we're located, you have our vacant lot and AC Moore School. If you look at the Edelwein-Rosewood corner, I'm still going towards Harden, you have the AC Moore School and AC Moore Parking Lot. If you look at the Harden-Rosewood corridor, you have a liquor beer store. So if you look through that whole length of the corridor, you've got two undeveloped lots. One has a really bad slope, which makes it problematic for development in this particular location. The ice machine, and y'all should have in your brochure or a picture, it basically looks like this. This is the volume ice machine. This is not the bag machine you would get when you go up to the small convenience store. This is the, this is the ice machine where you get a Phillips Lodge cooler if you go into the beach football game, whatever. So the size of this can be, is max is 18 by 24. The guy is actually looking at an 18 by 16-foot space. Where this would fit on our lot is it basically would back up to the Cock and Bull Parking Lot, which is to the west. It would sit in the middle of the lot. It would, it's only 200 square feet, so it would require, because you have to have three, it would require three parking spaces. The proposed owner is proposing a alternate source for the parking lot, which Studio LRR has, which is a gravel finely mesh parking. It's not asphalt. It's finely mesh gravel, which water would then infiltrate into. Because he only needs a small portion of the lot for the machine, we would probably leave most of the vegetation close to South Waukama there. A typical parking space has to be 9 by 18, and then about another 18 feet on top of that for pulling in and pull out. So we're right at the limits as far as people getting in and parking. Some people have raised concern that there are other ice, other ice operators close by. One, this is on the right side of the street as you go towards the football stadium, as you go towards the fairground, as you go to I-77, as you go to I-26. This is a bulk volume machine, not the bag machine. There will be no access onto this street from South Waukama. There's a curved 21-foot curb cut off of Rosewood. That's the only way in and the only way out. There is not enough, you have to have 15 feet from an adjoining curb cut, and that would basically put us at the corner, and it's too close that it doesn't work. So that's why we placed it there. I have tried to find somewhere, someone to go there. It's been very problematic because of the size of the lot. If you look at the C2 versus the C3 uses, almost all of those uses are going to require some type of building. The only exception would be a parking lot. I approached both AC Moore Relishland School District 1 and the owner of the Cock and Bull property to see if they were interested in buying it for parking. I got no response from any of them. I sent them, I sent both of them copies of our applications, asking if they had any questions. I have gotten no response from them. So we have tried the best we can to find somebody to go there. The only valid contract we have is for somebody who wants to put an ice machine there. If he at some later time just moves the machine, then there's a couple of things going to happen. Granted, it'll still be C3, but he'll have to get a new variance from Bozza for setbacks, which we will have to get, because you'll need, right now, the setbacks from Rosewood are 25 feet, and we can get, we can file for a variance to get that substantially reduced, depending on the vegetation. But the person who's proposing to buy is probably going to be required by Bozza to put a 10-foot wood fence between this property and the adjoining residential rental unit. So that's sort of where we are. We started in the box. This property originally was C3. It was changed without our owner's permission to C2. This leads into my taking argument. I'm sure you all are familiar with the Lucas versus the South Carolina Coastal Council lawsuit. The facts on that was Mr. Lucas owned two lots on Wild Dunes. The state created setbacks for the dune lines. His, the majority of his property was on the dune side of the property. Supreme Court held that that was a taking. He was entitled to compensation. Our argument here is that, first, the lot was 63 by 60. Then the DOT took a portion of the property for which they paid Ms. Lamb compensation, and then zoning was changed from R3, I mean, C3 to C2, for which Ms. Lamb has received no compensation. In effect, based on my ability to sell this property, has basically made this property unsettling. So that's sort of where we are. We would argue that the best use for this property was something like this as a limited use. It doesn't make any noise. It just needs electricity. There's a power line that runs behind it that could be tapped into. The water line is on South Waukama, so we'll have to run a line to that, but that, I think in its nutshell, is our argument. I'd be glad to answer any questions you've got.
Well, I have one or two. This is on the left-hand side heading toward the football stadium.
Right-hand side. If you go, it's on the same side of AC Moore. If you're going down AC Moore towards Rosewood, it's towards South Assembly, it's on the right side. The left side is a convenience store. It has a small ice machine where you pick the bags out. This is on the north side of Rosewood.
And this was zoned C2 without any approvals from anybody?
Well, it went, it went, it went, Central Midlands was involved. You know, they had discussions on it. I have letters in Ms. Lamb's file where some people objected, including Mrs. Lamb, but the zone.